Okay, you got more of a call this morning's meeting to order. And the first thing which we did last week, we covered the open meeting law adjustments. I'll again read that announcement. With the COVID-19 pandemic, the data practices office at the Department of Administration has provided guidance in open meeting law adjustments under the Minnesota statute 13D in specific circumstances. Section 13D, oh, 21 requires a public body to make a determination that an in-prison meeting is not practical or prudent because of health pandemic or emergency declaration under the Minnesota statute 12 to make the allowed adjustments. Today I'm making that declaration. Under this declaration, Clay County Board meeting may be conducted by telephone or other electric means so as long as the following conditions are met. All participating members can hear one another. And at this time, I think Jenny is the only one. Jenny, you are there, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Members of the public at the physical meeting location can hear all discussion unless attendance at the regular meeting location is not feasible due to the health pandemic. At least one member of the public body, chief legal counsel, chief administrator officer is present at the meeting location unless unfeasible due to health pandemic and all votes are taken by roll call. Future board meetings may be held under these parameters as long as the pandemic or emergency declarations are in effect. Thank you. And with that, we'll go on to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna motion on a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call now too?
Yeah.
Excuse me, we're going too fast.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Moja.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Okay, with that, citizens will be heard and I see there, I know, everybody's employees here. Approval of payments and bills.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to approve the bills. Go ahead with the roll call again.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Moja.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
And the next thing will be approval of the board minutes from March 17th and March 18th. We had two meetings last week, or the week before.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna motion a second on the minutes for March 17th and 18th. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Roll call.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Moja.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
And with that, we'll go into the Rhonda, ask approval of hire one social worker for child protection and one case aid. Have you already seen it there? Go ahead.
Yes, all right. Thank you, and thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda today. I know this may feel a bit untimely with everything else that's on your plates, but I think what we worry about is these times are quite stressful for the families that we serve and unfortunately, child protection and child welfare services don't stop. In fact, I think the need for our services increased during difficult times like this. So, thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda. What I have submitted, I'm gonna just talk a little bit about, we did go to the personnel issues committee last week and we actually had asked for two social workers and a case aid. That is what we feel we need in order to address our caseload sizes, help us to stop some of the turnover that we're seeing in the unit and to address the needs of our families a bit better. The discussion was to bring before the board today a request for one social worker and one case aid with the plan to address the second social worker later on in the year or perhaps in the 2021 budget process.
Jenny, Jenny, can you turn down your...
Got it, sorry.
Just have her mute her phone. Go ahead.
Repeating myself. Okay, so maybe I'll just ask you to flip to the second page at the top where it says 2020 salary calculation worksheet. If it's your, I'm not sure if that's your second page.
Is it this one?
Second page where it lists the two social workers. It lists a new social worker and a case aid. I just wanted to walk that, walk through that with you. That would be assuming May 1st, we were able to start. That would be assuming maybe we could, we could start the positions both May 1st. So, this is, that calculation of what those costs would be. You'll see on the far right side, it's $97,763 again for those two positions. Now, of course, approving these positions now would assume that they would carry forward and so the costs going into 2021, 2021 would of course be more than that, but this was, this is what the cost would be for 2020. The next page at the top where it says 2020 budget line adjustments to pay for the two positions in 2020. I've listed three different budget areas there. These are areas that we have been watching. You'll see the five-year history of expenditures and on the far right side, you will see what we have budgeted for 2020, what I am suggesting for a budget amendment and what that difference would be to support the two positions for 2020. During our PIC committee, Commissioner Gross had asked a few questions about these areas and the obvious question is, you know, you can see the trend in these areas being lower and could we have made some budget adjustments prior to, to this? And fair question, so I wanted to just talk a little bit about, about that. The first area, the CCDTF, that stands for Consolidated Chemical Dependency Treatment Fund. And if you recall, this is, the county has to pay about a 15% share for every dollar we spend for folks that go to chemical dependency treatment that are eligible for the fund. So, each quarter monthly, we get a bill for, we get about a 15% share. This is the line, in 2017, going into 2018, we had some leveling off of our share. Prior to that, we, our share was about 22 to 23% and the state made some legislative adjustments to kind of equalize counties' shares across the state. So, our share went down a bit there. This is also the area, if you recall, the county got a, oh, where's, we didn't have all the handouts?
Oh.
I got it. Steve, we got it.
Okay, sorry.
I was just wondering.
Oh, the print's a little small, apologize for that.
Yes.
This is the area where we received notice from the Department of Human Services that we were gonna have to pay back $117,000 and all the counties got a notice that they were gonna have to pay back because of some miscalculation by the Department of Human Services going back to 2014. If you recall, our county along with most of, if not all of the counties in the state made the decision that we were not gonna pay that back to DHS and we were gonna be asking the state and the governor to help make the counties whole in that situation. The governor did include that in his budget proposal for 2020 and so it's likely that we'll get billed that $117,000 and we'll have to pay it, but then we will get reimbursed through that process. So, that's that line.
Rhonda, is that why the, why it went from a $165 expenditure to $300,000?
The $300,000 is the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so did we include in the budget the payback?
Well, in a sense, we did. I just didn't reduce what we had budgeted because we had that, but we actually had $325,000 budgeted in 2018 and 19, but those expenditures were quite a bit lower. So, we reduced it some going forward, but not fully just because I wasn't sure about that payback and what it would mean for us in the county. The second line is day treatment for children. This is a line that is a contract relationship between Clay County, the school, Morehead School District, and Lakeland Mental Health Center. This contract has been changing over the years. It used to be that the county initiated the contract between the school and Lakeland. Then there was some legislative changes and the school started contracting directly with Lakeland. We were always the, the last source for billing if kiddos didn't have insurance or they couldn't bill Medicaid for the service, so we were always the last point of billing. We've changed our model for children's mental health a bit over the years and now what we're doing is we're supporting mental health liaisons in all of the elementary schools. So, we've committed $65,000 to the Morehead School District for those elementary schools to, we pay for a third of those positions and then there's a grant and billing for those others. So, we're clear on what our commitment is and then the additional $15,000 for the $80,000 budget is for the middle and high school supporting mental health in the schools. So, knowing that we have that commitment of $80,000, we could reduce that by $32,000 to help pay for our positions that I'm requesting. And then the last one is mental health case management for adults. This again has been a budget line that what we're seeing is more and more of our adults on managed care plans, so our providers are billing the managed care plans directly versus Medicaid and then our agency having a fee for that. One of the things I think I will need to do in the 2021 budget is if the adult services stay a little bit lower, we might need to shift a little bit of this money into the children's side because the children's side is going up a little bit. But that's why I didn't reduce it as much as perhaps it maybe could have been at least at this point. So, that's where that $97,000 is coming from and those are the two positions we're requesting. And so I thought I would have our supervisors here talk a little bit about which I think you've, you've heard ongoing is the difficulty we're having in, in our staffing. So, the last document is caseload, or breakdown of caseloads. So, I don't know who wants to start.
Just again, over the last several months, we had another worker go out on maternity leave, so those staff were again asked to take over cases and then shortly after that, we had another resignation. Just what we're hearing from staff who are leaving is just that the caseloads are unmanageable, the case sizes. I reached out to some counterparts of, in other counties, Becker County, Crow Wing County, and overall, most say that 10, eight to 10 cases is what a case manager can manage. And right now, we have caseworkers who have cases of 14 cases, working with large families with large sibling groups and they just can't manage these jobs. They're not getting some of the critical paperwork that affects the court system, that affects permanency, that affects reunification of getting these kids home because they're just managing and trying to put out fires every day. So, really, that's kind of what we're hearing. With these resignations, we had to pull case managers who, or staff from different units to help cover these cases because the caseloads just continue to be so high. So, we had to ask Scott Madison, who was a, an employee in the adult or the disabilities unit to help cover a few cases. The intake worker, she had stepped up and took a few of these cases. And then it's the services that we're providing to our families too with multiple changes of different caseworkers and not having consistent case management that is affecting these cases. I don't know if you guys want to add anything or...
Well, that's, what we know, the research on child protection is the number one determining factor of success is the relationship that the family has with their worker. So, when you talk about all the different changes and turnover and maternity leaves, we really struggle in providing that effective service to the families when they're getting a new worker in three months and then they're just getting to know that worker. They have to tell their story, which can be quite traumatic for families. They have to tell the story again to a new worker and then three months later have to tell their story again. That's both really difficult for the family and then really difficult for the worker coming into it, having to say, "I'm sorry, I just don't know your family well enough. I need to get to know you," requiring the family to tell their story again. The other thing that I'd like to highlight on this breakdown of caseloads is it's not just the number of cases that can be difficult to manage, it's the complexity of the cases and the fact that the overwhelming percentage of these cases involve court. It wouldn't be as difficult to have 14 cases if only five of them were in court. The requirements for court are obviously a lot higher than a case that we would have that does not have court involvement. The overwhelming majority of everyone's cases has very high numbers of percentages being placement cases where children have been removed from the home with court involvement. So, that adds an additional level of complexity to an already pretty high number. Just like Amy said, well, I, we have staff in the disabilities unit and as well as my intake workers and my assessment workers just kind of hanging on to these case management cases because we don't want to completely flood the ongoing case managers right now. So, the idea would be is if we could get that position, the case aid to help out with some of the transportations and visits, just the logistics of what it looks like for a child to be removed from the home, that would kind of share the load and ease the burden a little bit, so it wouldn't, wouldn't be so difficult for the existing case managers to continue on.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. So, the, the number of kids in this far-right column here on the breakdown of caseloads, you may have answered my question, but so not all of these kids are in a home setting?
Correct.
Some of them might be in a foster care setting or do any of these pertain to people in our juvenile center?
There may be some of these kids that are placed in the juvenile center, yes. So, that, this would include any kid who's in a residential treatment facility, the west, the juvenile center, foster care, in placement with a relative.
So, so those that are in our juvenile center, there's, we obviously have some counseling and treatment programs going on there, but they still then also have the caseworker that's always part of that process?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand how this all works here, so.
I think the complexity too, I mean, I've been in child protection for 21 years and I did case management for over, well, I would say almost 15 years. And back, I hate to make myself sound old, but back in my day, when you had a caseload, half of those cases were maybe placement cases. Otherwise, the kids were in the home, you were going out, meeting with the families in the home. Today, almost every case is a placement case. And that just, when you have a placement, you're coordinating visits, you're making sure the parents are getting to, to their appointments, you're seeing the kids in the foster home, you're seeing the kids with the parents. So, it's just the complexity, the amount of paperwork, the plans, the requirements that just make these cases so overwhelming.
So, and I, I don't mean to belabor, but so, so the, the kids that, the kids that we have within our own facility here in Clay County, they're, they're there 24/7, right? They, they're staying there and, and I, don't get me wrong, I, I'm just trying to, is, is there any, anywhere where we're maybe duplicating our service for those kids that are within that facility?
No, because we're statutorily required to see those kids face-to-face at least once a month.
Okay.
And then they have other case managers that help get them to their, to their appointments, but even so, they're, we, we have the custody, so there's appointments we have to be at to give those permissions to be on medications or sign up on shots or different things. So, even if there is another case manager that might help at different times for appointments, we still have those requirements for those kids because we're the custodian of those kids.
I, I understand. So, is, is there, for example, the, the kids that, that you have caseworkers that might be in foster homes, they're not in a 24/7 guardian situation like we have at the treatment center or at the juvenile center? So, is, is there at least a reduction in the caseload by your caseworkers for the people that are housed at the juvenile center?
I... Well, a reduction in work, you mean?
Well, the, the, all, all of what we're talking about here, the, the amount of work that a caseworker puts into each of its individuals, is there, is that reduced somewhat? Is that work reduced somewhat by them being in the setting at the juvenile center?
Proximity, I would say, helps especially if the, if the kids are placed here in our county versus, you know, other counties and, and quite distances. So, I think that is certainly a saving for time. Requirements of face-to-face, requirements of your case plans, court orders, if, when Indian child welfare applies, that doesn't change anything. I think certainly we have such a great relationship with West Central staff and so that collaboration piece, it's a little bit easier to walk, you know, down the stairs and over to meetings versus traveling across town. So, I think those are all certain things that help ease some of that.
But on some of, on the same note of that, those, some of our kids, social service kids that are placed in the juvenile center haven't ever committed any crimes or they're just there because simply we don't have another placement for them, but the court still holds us highly accountable to try to move those kids out of that facility because it's more restrictive than just a therapeutic foster home or a foster home. So, actually, they're probably working harder to try to get those kids out of the non-secure program.
Okay, so they're in the, they're, they're more likely in non-secure than secure.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we don't have, I don't, none of our kids are placed in the secure side through education institutions. Ours are all in the non-secure.
They're, they're not, they're in the fault of their own?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I think what I didn't understand, some of this stuff, when you say eight cases, you know, person probably thinks, "Well, that's not so bad, eight cases," you know, but each one of those cases probably has a whole bunch of, I mean, each case involves more than one child, you know?
Oh, yes.
So, I mean, I guess we have to look at that, you know, when, when you have a family with four or five kids, you know, they're spread four or five different homes and stuff like that. It, it takes quite a bit to get involved, that's all. I mean, my perception of that was, I mean, I thank you for giving me a little bit update on that, you know, so, okay.
Mr. Chair, we had, you know, we discussed this at PIC last week and had a lengthy discussion about this and I think they all understand it's a difficult request right now with everything else going on, but, but they have great need and this was a compromise resolution to this problem that we came up with, at least for the time being. So, given that, I would make a motion to approve the request.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? Do you have any further discussion that you want to bring forth? Okay. Okay, now, we've got a motion to hire one social worker child for child protection and one case aid position, is that right? That's what it's for? Okay. All in favor? Roll call, excuse me.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Moja.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Okay.
I apologize, I wonder if the motion would include the approval to backfill should there be any internal interest?
Okay, for backfill, you want to amend your motion, Grant?
Yes.
Jenny?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we got, add it up for backfill also on that motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we have an update by our county minister, Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So, you know, it continues to be a challenging time and with all the new information that's coming out on COVID-19, almost on an hourly basis, I think we've really tried to make every effort here at Clay County to make the most appropriate adjustments to protect our citizens and, and our employees, again, kind of while balancing the, meeting the needs of our citizens. On March 18th, this board approved resolution 20, 20-16 limiting access to the county and at that point, the exterior doors were locked when citizens were encouraged to make appointments to all of our different departments. I just want to be, be, ensure that we're clear that while the Supreme Court Justice has limited the type of hearings that take place during this state of emergency, that our courts continue to be open. And if you have any questions related to court, court matters, we encourage you to contact Court Administration at 218-299-5065. In addition to, to some other, we have made some procedural changes out of our motor vehicle that, that has now since closed, but we also made those changes at that time. In addition to the operations procedural changes, this board also to, also made adjustments to where our employees work during this pandemic. In hopes of limiting the spread even further, we offered our staff that have children, excuse me, in hopes of limiting the spread even further and offering staff that children, staff that have children at home for schools and daycares, our, through supervisor approval, we offered flexible work schedules, a remote, remote work policy was created and implemented and we approved a policy which allows our employees to utilize up to 80 hours of sick. On March 24th, our personal issues committee met after our board meeting, as we will through the remainder of this pandemic, and we looked at additional adjustments the county may be looking to make based on the ever-changing information. We also began to have discussions about how operations may need to be adjusted should the governor operate, offer some form of shelter in place order. On March 25th, Governor Walz announced through Executive Order 2020 that the state will be under stay-at-home and limited movement order for the next two weeks effective Friday, March 27th at 11:59. The order provides specific examples of what companies, fields of work, positions should be considered or would be considered essential. The order also contained language regard to local government authority to deciding which workers are critical and ensuring that ongoing services can be provided to Clay County citizens during the pandemic. Based on our discussion with the PIC committee, the following recommendations were implemented on Saturday, March 28th at 12:00 a.m. With the understanding that they would be brought forward to the full board for discussion today. All county employees shall be deemed critical sector workers. The county, the county board of commissioners and administrative staff will continue to evaluate employee status on an ongoing basis, taking into consideration things such as the new executive order by federal, state, and local officials, department, department workloads, and the longevity of the pandemic. Effective March 30th, Clay County will further limit public access to the buildings. On campus, we will continue to provide services from 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. We will remain open to serve the public through telephone, email, US mail, and other online services available through our website. Appointments with the public other than through court activities, statutory policy regulations will be unavailable and attempt to comply with Executive Order 2020 and following social distancing recommendations. Human Resources has been working with department heads over the past two weeks to identify which employees are able to work remotely. While a number of employees have made that transition, Executive Order is clear that all employees that can work from home should do so. Therefore, supervisors have been working with staff and those eligible to make, to make further plans. Effective March 27th, the motor vehicle department closed at 1:30. They will remain closed at least through April 13th. For our citizens, it's important to understand that the legislature did pass a bill on March 26th that extends the timeframe for Minnesotans to renew licenses, permits, disability parking permits, and that will expire during this emergency with no additional fees being charged for, for these extensions. Further, it's directed that the Department of Public Safety to work with law enforcement to ensure that there's an awareness so our citizens aren't being fined for any, any, any of those tabs or licenses that are, that are now, have not been extended. So, and the other portion of that is to understand that, I think Commissioner Campbell addressed last week, that the US Department of Homeland Security has also extends the Real ID deadline to October 1st of 2021. And so, so those are, those are the, the different things that we, we had a discussion with in the PIC this past week and so I guess with that... And so, I guess with that, I'll stop right now and turn that over for any discussion that, that you, you may have.
Steve, is there, is there, some of these things were approved through PIC. Are you looking for validation of that by this board?
I would be looking for validation that, I did run things by our board chair also. But I think from a, this is the first time we've been able to get together as a board to look at identifying all employees as, as critical, at least at this point. And, and also, one of the things is further limiting access, access to, to our, to our county buildings.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move all of those things to, I would like to also include that if there are, there, if there are issues that require immediate attention by, by our administrator, that, that decision be approved subject to the board chair's review, you know, until our full board can meet. So I would like to include that as part of the motion.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Okay. All in favor of the motion, I will take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hany.
Aye.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Moja.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just had a couple other things that I just wanted to point out. In addition to these different topics, last week, Darren from Human Resources provided informational session at the end of board on the Family First Act, Response Act. This new federal law goes into, into, can be enacted tomorrow and it runs through the end of December 31st of 2020. And so as a brief reminder, this act provides certain employers and government, that the government include to provide employees with paid sick time, expanded family and medical leave act, and specific reasons for the, related to COVID-19. And so, if there are any questions that you have in regards to this, we encourage you to call Human Resources at 299-5015. And so just, I, I think just a quick overview, I wanted to point out a few different things. We've gone into, based on the board's actions, our county has gone from limited access to, to closed from the standpoint of, we'll continue to provide service, but not in a face-to-face manner. The court system continues to remain open, as is run by the state. And again, please contact administration with any issues. Our DMV is now closed from, at least until April 13th, or otherwise, otherwise directed by the governor and the Department of Safety. Our landfill is open for both private and public use at this time, but please wait for direction from the attendant who's on duty. And I would also note, note yesterday, the DNR, the DNR did implement a burning restriction effective yesterday. It's a little bit different than what we see every, every other year. There's usually once the snow's gone, there's a, a number of weeks that, that they allow our citizens to, to burn. But that, that restriction did come in yesterday in hopes that we wouldn't have to have to spend any resources on, on any issues that may come about fire. So, and then lastly, I would mention, our Clay County hazardous, household hazardous waste and electronics recycling are closed until further notice. And while we certainly respect our citizens' ability to go through their houses and their garages, we would ask that, that they not come and drop off the material at the front locked door, if that would be possible. With that, that concludes my report. Is there, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Steve, can you update the board on what the planning commission and board of adjustments planning to do going forward?
Yes, I did, I was going to do that a little bit later, but yeah, the, the planning, we are going to continue with, with the construction season. Fast approaching, we want to make sure that we're not getting in the way of, of businesses and citizens that want to move forward on different projects that they have. And so, starting in April, we're going to continue with our, with our board of adjustments and planning commission meetings through virtual meetings. Matt Jacobson has been working hard in establishing the format that, that the meetings will be taking place with. And so, all of that will be listed in the postings for the upcoming weeks.
Okay. Very good. Steve, I would want to really thank you and your staff. I mean, this is a lot of different type of decision-making that we're doing nowadays than we were used to, you know. You guys are really going along and doing, making those decisions. And thank you very much for, for the efforts you and your supervisors are doing.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. We're fortunate to have a highly qualified department heads that are able to make a lot of this happen, so.
Trying times we're going through right now. Okay. With that, we'll go into Gabe. Give us an update on the flood.
Chair, Commissioners. Latest for river will gauge levels from seven to eleven. You can kind of get an idea of all things are looking there.
Thank you, Steve.
Good morning. Well, our flood outlook is, is looking pretty good. We've had an ideal, ideal melt. The weather's been great the last couple of weeks, so we're very fortunate for the way that's shaped up with everything else that's going on. Highway Department has kind of the bulk of what's been going on over the weekend. Dave did have five or six guys working over the weekend to watch roads, put up signage, things of that nature. He informed me this morning that about a half dozen minor gravel roads, not any of our major paved county roads, were closed due to flooding, mainly down in the Barnesville to Saban area. As it works its way north, I expect that, starting probably today, is going to shift to the north side of Highway 10 along the Buffalo River. Yesterday, I did have one residence down in the Saban area that they were worried that their house was gonna take on some floodwaters. It was due to overland. So the township did provide them some sandbags. I did contact the highway department and Dave sent one of their engineers out there. And I believe it was determined that it was a drainage ditch that's maintained by the watershed that may have had some blockage or at least wasn't able to handle the flow. So I know they were able to clean that ditch out. And I, I talked to that homeowner this morning and they didn't have to deploy any sandbags and it looks like it's, it's dropping. So that's good. The other thing, Buffalo River has, obviously, it's making its way north now. So the, the south branch gauge, if you look on your sheet, is dropping as of yesterday, which is, is good to go, or good to know. That went from moderate back into minor flood stage. They're not predicting secondary crest at this time, barring any unforeseen major rain events. And if you look at the gauge on the north branch of the Buffalo River, that gauge is up by Concordia Church. So that would be just to the west of Conner Road 11 on 80th Avenue. And you see that spiked a little bit yesterday and, and the guess is that's due to some sort of blockage or whatnot in the river between Conner Road 18 and 26 that would cause that to kind of jump up. But this morning, I, I took a spin around, so did Dave. And Conner Road 18, Conner Road 26 along the Buffalo River there are in fine shape. They still have a long ways to go before they're, those roads would be in any danger of shutting down. So that's, that's looking good. Red River is predicted to crest at 31 feet in Fargo-Moorhead on Thursday. It looks like it's gonna, you know, the prediction is that it will maintain that for about a day or so and begin dropping on Saturday and be back down into moderate, out of major flood stage by the end of, end of the weekend. So things are looking good along that front. The city of Moorhead did close the 15th Avenue Bridge, the old toll bridge, yesterday. That'll, that'll remain closed for the time being. They closed a couple other, I think Holiday Drive, which runs underneath the interstate. Third Street, I believe it is, by the Herberters parking ramp, that's closed. And those are, those are normal on even minor flooding areas. So other than that, they're, they've taken their preparations to, their actions for up to, I think, 31 feet. They haven't had to enact any of their other actions in the city beyond that yet and they don't have any plans to. So realistically, if this week maintains the way it is, by next week, we should kind of be coming out of this really good. So obviously, we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible on our, on our flood fighting efforts. I, I highly doubt we are going to meet any sort of minimum or dollar amount to qualify for any, any sort of reimbursement. So again, we're all trying to be as responsible as possible on, on our, our costs. Any questions regarding flood?
Looking good. I just have some comments. I had a resident concerned on the river in township as far as flooding around his farm area and stuff like that. And I know, I don't know, I see Dave is here. Are we doing any ditch opening, stuff like that? I know Buffalo Watershed Board is opening some ditches. Are we doing that too?
We opened up the last week or so, we've opened up about a few. On Sunday night, I had to hire Mike Gabor from American Advisors to open one up. It's a ditch that needs, requires a long dip on the hose. We had hired him, we hired him last year, same thing. We will open up any additional ditches that come across. A lot of ditches have opened up, they're free flowing right now. The bigger, real wide watershed ditches, those are ones that are still kind of hanging up some trouble. There's a big ditch called, I think, South Blaine hasn't yet to open up a little bit, or fully open. But we have all the ditches up as we need them. And we have, we rented one backhoe, we have our own backhoe and we hired some.
Do you have any further report on the flood, Dave, or you all?
No, I think, like you said, like Dave said, it started in Barnesville, managed way up to U.S. 10. We had three, six, and eight guys out all weekend long. Didn't have received any, any calls from Sheriff's Department. So I think we did a pretty good job of covering it, there weren't any surprises, which is all good. Other than that, like, as it makes its way north of 10 now, I think some of the bridges are higher, some of the roads are a little bit higher than that, so there is. So I perceive maybe less problems this week.
Very good.
One other thing I forgot to mention is Terry Grundy from the Highway Department does update the county road closure map. It's on the county website. So if the public or anyone has questions on what roads may or may not be closed, she updates that daily.
Okay. Thank you so much for your report.
All right, thank you.
You're gonna hang around Gabe, right? Oh, yeah, I'll be here.
Okay. Kathy, you're next, I guess, with the COVID-19 update. Anything new to say there?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
I think there's a lot, a lot new to say.
Nothing new to say. Any questions? No, just kidding. Thank you, I commend you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, for your social distancing. And then you kicked off the county administrator and the county attorney, which was very wise. I'm just kidding about that. So, yes, we have a, a number of my staff here, we have a fair amount of information, so we'll try to get through it fairly quickly. So just as a reminder to everyone about the, the governor, that stay-at-home message to help slow the spread and, you know, get the timeframe for building up the hospital capacities, getting access to equipment needs, like ventilators, testing equipment, planning for how we're going to care for vulnerable populations and, and just to kind of get ready for further mitigation. Now, again, the stay-at-home message, just as a reminder, people can leave to do their emergency, medical, you know, things that they need to do as far as appointments, medical supplies, necessary services, such as groceries, getting gasoline, those kinds of things. So essential, essential things is what he's requesting us to be mindful of. You can still go out and do outdoor activities. We want people to get exercise and get the fresh air, but just be mindful always of that six-foot distancing that we are, we are harping on all the time. So that stay-at-home message is great, it's necessary for us, but just the essential things that people need to go out and get. Of course, the critical workers are exempt from that, which is public health, healthcare workers, law enforcement, you know, the people that are working in the pharmacies, grocery stores, first responders, et cetera. So those are the necessary people that need to be getting to their offices and, and being out there to work. He did close, continue to close the public accommodations till May 1st. I know that creates a lot of anxiety and stress, but this virus is, is, it's still ramping up. It's, it's a very, it's a various, serious thing. And, and some people are maybe not feeling like, you know, maybe it's not as serious because we're not seeing a whole lot in our area. But it, but it will continue to rise as testing continues to happen. Can you pass those out, Jamie? I've got information on our cases. And again, when we have this stay-at-home order, there's about 33 states now that have enacted that stay-at-home order. The governors have enacted that. So there's a fair number of states now that, that are really wanting people to be staying at home except for essential services. There's, Jamie's passing out the information. So in Clay County, we have 576 positive, or in, I'm sorry, in Minnesota, 576 cases. In Clay County, we have six now. Thank you. And then people that no longer need to be isolated, it's 260. So 18,822 are the number of completed tests in Minnesota in the lab, both the public health lab and some external labs. We have 10 deaths. So people are dying from this illness. And, and then ICU, there's 24 now that are in the ICU for care, 56 that are hospitalized. You see the U.S. cases have gone up, 164,0345 confirmed, over 3,000 deaths in the United States and close to 6,000 that have recovered. And then globally, numbers go up as well. We're almost at 800,030, almost 39,000 deaths. And then 162, 163 almost that, that have recovered. So the numbers continue to climb, we're going to see that. We're going to see an increase in the next couple of weeks to a month because testing is still ramping up. We, there's been testing in Minnesota just for the high, the hospitalized, those in congregate care and, and those with underlying health conditions. But there's a number that are not getting tested that may have mild illness, just staying at home with mild illness and may have COVID. So we don't want to be deceived by our low numbers because we know it's community spread now. So we know that there's a number of people that have COVID-19 that are out in the community that haven't been tested. So these numbers are, are lower than what we would expect to see.
Have they determined how it's being spread, by contact or by airborne or?
Yeah, Jamie will talk about that in just a minute. Thank you for that question.
Sorry we're getting ahead here.
Yeah, no, that's okay. You, you see what's happened in New York, I guess that's on the news. That's a, that's a very, that's the epicenter of the outbreak, 67,000 cases, over 1,000 deaths. That's a pretty significant number. And I know the governor has now reached out to, to all healthcare workers. They, they really are short healthcare workers. Those frontline workers are, are critical. And they also have that, that mobile hospital, that hospital ship that arrived there to, to help with the strain. So that, you know, if you look at what's happening in New York, you see how serious this can get. So the virus will continue to ramp up. We have not seen the peak yet. We won't know when we see the peak. It, it changes every, every day, we're getting new information about this. So we know it's going to get worse before it gets better. And we also know, the, the prediction is, like, almost all viruses, it, it will peak and then we'll, we'll see a decline, but it will ramp up. The prediction is in the fall again, we'll see another increase in this. And that's the, again, it's hard to predict exact about what is going to happen because it's a virus. So we, it's, it's kind of as they're studying it day to day, we're getting more information. But we do know it is going to get worse and it's going to be a number of weeks to a month before we see any changes in improvement. And then I think, Jamie, you can take it from there. Thank you. I think that's working.
Okay, well, I'm going to start with doing some highlights and just talk a little bit about long-term care. Public Health is charged with protecting the health of the public with an emphasis on the most vulnerable populations. And so, part of what we're doing right now is working with our community and partners on congregate care and long-term care facilities. We have 25 long-term care facilities in Minnesota that currently have outbreaks. In those facilities, there are 21 residents that have been affected by COVID and 11 of those are healthcare workers. So there are about 375 long-term care facilities in Minnesota. So really, that is what we're focusing on because the most vulnerable, the people that it is most deadly for are those over age 80. So really, that is what we're focusing on because the most vulnerable, the people that it is most deadly for are those over age 80. And so I'm going to just kind of review some of the things that we've talked about previously about what we can do to control that. Again, our facilities are working diligently in protecting the vulnerable populations. But flu and coronavirus are both spreading the same way, so that's your question. The droplets from the cough can spread three to five feet, which is why we're saying stay six feet from each other. So that's the best way we can protect each other is to stay that six feet apart. It is, that coughing and sneezing is how it's being spread from a person who's ill and symptomatic to another person in the air. The other thing we've talked about is the surfaces, you know, and the best, there's a lot of discussion about surfaces. And the best way we can protect ourselves is to wash our hands before we prepare food, before we put our hands in our mouth, nose, and eyes. And so that's really going always back to that's how we can prevent that spread from surfaces. The average coronavirus patient can infect two to two and a half people, which makes it more contagious than flu. People over the age 80, as I said, are the most, it's the most deadly for people over the age 80. Five to 10 times more deadly than flu, coronavirus is for an individual from zero to 45. And it's 12 and a half percent more deadly for a person who's over the age of 85. So again, it is more contagious than flu, but I think we need to remember that it can also affect all of us. And the best way we can protect our total population is by keeping our distance and following the guidance. An estimated 70%, 17% of cases are asymptomatic. There's one thing we've talked about with this disease is we're constantly learning new information. What we hear in the media, we have to go back to CDC and MDH to see kind of the fact check and what do they know for sure. There is a lot that they're still learning, but they are thinking that it is very low transmission if that person is asymptomatic. But that's kind of the newest from CDC as of yesterday. If you have symptoms, you can manage them at home. You do not need to seek healthcare and you do not need to be tested. If you're an older person or a person with underlying healthcare conditions and you're ill, you probably want to reach out to your provider to see if they have any other recommendations for you. The most important thing is to stay rested and to stay hydrated if you're caring for yourself at home. Then there are precautions for protecting others in the environment that you're living in as well, as I mentioned earlier. Some of the COVID symptoms get worse about the sec, towards the end of the second week, and that's when you may want to seek healthcare. If you do, call 911, it's important that you call in advance. When you call, let them know that you are experiencing symptoms. Dispatchers will ask those questions, but let them know anything that you have communicated with your provider. If you have been tested, if you were told to stay home, those are things you'd want to share with 911 dispatchers. Let's see. CDC has not changed the recommendation on wearing masks for the general public. There's a lot of discussion about masks. It, in order to be fully protected, you need a mask that's fit, tested for you, which means that you've been tested to make sure the seal is good on your face. You also need eye protection because, again, that coughing and sneezing is spread, the droplets can land in your eyes and your mouth. And so that's the best way to be protected. The best way that the public can protect themselves is the six-foot social distancing. There's a lot of information out there about preparing masks, making masks, and it is better than nothing is basically. But it is also more important that we maintain that social distancing. And that's about it.
Is there any type of, I mean, you say isolate yourself. There's no treatments then available or any type of medication that have come up yet that's going to help?
Not at this time. As you've probably heard, there's a lot of things being tested and discussed, but at this time, the only treatment is to rest and to keep yourself hydrated unless you need emergency care.
I guess the other thing that you mentioned, that if a person feels that they do have it and they have some symptoms, to call 911, is that the procedure we want?
No, and really, you want to just manage your symptoms at home. Unless you are an elderly person or have a chronic health condition and are ill, you may want to reach out to your doctor to see if they have any special instructions. But the only time you want to call 911 is if you are not able to manage your health, it's an emergency situation at home.
Okay. I guess I heard that wrong.
Sorry.
We're supposed to call 911. All right, very good. Any other questions for, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Kathy, I think some of my questions that I have, I'm, I'm kind of relaying from citizens that have contacted me. So, number one, I received some information from an old high school classmate of mine who ended up being a infectious manager for Sanford, that, for her entire life until she recently retired. And she had sent me something here, and maybe you can jot this down, because when you look in social media, the statistics and, you know, the projected deaths and everything, they're all over the board. There was one place in Minnesota where I saw where they were anticipating 500,000 deaths. You know, I don't mean to laugh at that, you know, but, so she had, she had told me of a, of a website to go to that she felt was giving out really good information. And, and that website was healthdata.org. I don't know if you've heard of that one or not. But it breaks down, and what they've done is they've done, and it's done by, by Washington University. And it, and they, they broke it down by state. They broke it down to, from beds, hospital beds, beds available, beds needed, at, for, when they anticipate the peak of these things in each state. And it also, and they also did an inventory by state as far as ICU beds and what they anticipate for ICU, ICU beds. And it gets into the ventilators and all of that stuff. And I was able to go on to that site and I, you know, I was pretty impressed. You know, again, it's, who do you believe? You know, but I, but I think, and the reason that I, I felt confident in that is because it came from somebody who's been worked, that worked in that for a long time. So, and, you know, she, you know, she did say that she was involved with H1N1, she was involved with AIDS and all of these things that have, a lot of these things in her 30-some years in that position. And she did say that she's seen nothing like this one in terms of what she talked about, the infection rate. You know, so people do need to take it serious. So I just wanted to point that out, maybe you can look at that. And it also, it also then gave for each state when they anticipate the peak to be. And I think in, in Minnesota, that peak is mid to late April. That's what they're showing right now. But who knows? But, and then, and then there's, I've gotten a lot of feedback about, still a lot of social gatherings going on. And I had a communication from somebody last night that they were out for a walk and in somebody's driveway, there were 30 to 40 people having a little beer party. You know, and Gabe, this is kind of one of the things that I want you to hear about this. And I, you know, I, my first question, why are they staying six feet apart? You know, so that, that can play a part of it and then set up. And then they said that while they were doing that, all their kids were in the backyard playing together. And that's scary. I don't know that people are, you know, I think you mentioned, I don't know if we're taking this serious enough yet in regard to the ability to, to transfer that virus. And then, and then just this morning, somebody contacted me about, apparently there's been some research done by mapping from cell phones. Have you heard of this at all? And, Gabe, you have?
I think we put some data out last week.
Yeah, so.
And sort of the letter grade.
Yeah, and well, and just this morning, I see where, from a cellphone standpoint, every state was given a letter grade and it was even, even went down to by county. And again, that, they were being able to tell who was moving around. And the state of Minnesota got a C minus, and Clay County got a C minus in this. And that, you know, and again, I want to, I want to tell you my, the source that was given to me, so you can check it. And that was matador, M-A-T-A-D-O-R, network.com. Put that out. But I, you know, and again, I think if, you know, there may be some indication that that's right, but of course, some of those people might be the people, the exact people that are supposed to be moving around too.
One thing to keep in mind too is we've got the interstate running through. So it's taking, it's taking cellphone data as a bonus of our towers. We still have a lot of interstate traffic, I-29, U-129, or so, that we bouncing out for our comments. Some of it's maybe a little skewed, but.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, see, that's good to know, that's, but that's, those are the comments that I wanted to make. And I think anybody who's, who's probably not taking this serious probably should be doing some rethinking right now. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. And I think sometimes when you talk about the people standing out, yeah, crowded people, for some reason, they think they're outside. So maybe that's okay to stand closer together, but that is not the case. As Jamie described, that, you know, the spread can be three to five feet, whether you're indoors or outdoors. So that six-foot distancing is just as important outdoors as it is indoors. So, yes, I would caution the, you know, the, the community again to just, this, this is a serious virus, more serious than we've ever experienced. And so we need to really heed the warnings. And when we're feeling like we're, we're doing enough mitigation or maybe even more than we should, it might not even be enough. So we have to keep that in mind, that, you know, every, as difficult as this is to close, you know, public accommodations, gyms and restaurants and, and bars, it's, it's a necessity so we don't see such a massive, or trying to slow the spread and see less people infecting each other. So that's, that's very important. We do have two other of my team that have a few things to talk about. Rory Beal, Health Promotion Director, and Josh Ebert is our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. So I just want to thank my team, this Incident Command team is, we're, you know, they're just, they're doing a lot of work. There's so much to kind of get through and cover for public health because this is a pandemic, it's public health-led. So I appreciate the team, I appreciate all of the public health staff that have, some have taken on extra duties, like our public information officers, so, and then, and then all the staff, they're working to try to keep up with their clients and meeting the needs that we typically have to do. But it's a huge undertaking. We also have great partners, you know, Gabe obviously is a key partner, we have some social services staff, we have Chad that comes to our briefings. Chad is the Moorhead City Emergency Manager. So great partners, we have a great team, and so I appreciate all the work that everyone's doing. So I'll turn it over to Rory and Josh.
Sure. Good morning, Board, everyone watching. I just wanted to, Kathy asked me to just expand a little bit on what's going on around the state of Minnesota for planning, expanding our hospital capacity. And so I'll just give a real quick, a few comments on that. There's a lot of work going on at state level, of course. I believe that the state of Minnesota is taking a really proactive approach to this, which is great to see. They're trying to get ahead of this, and of course, the time that's been given during this executive orders that are in place are giving them opportunity to, to plan for the peak on this. So real quickly, in this week and in the next week, the, Joe Kelly, who is the Director of Emergency Management, Homeland Security, has been given the undertaking to look at alternative care sites around the state that could be used for, for care. And what those are is, an alternative care site is obviously alternative to a hospital setting. And so the idea is to leave those spaces in the hospital for the most critical, those that are being affected by COVID. And then those that are not in need of such intensive care could be basically outsourced to an alternative care site for their follow-up care. Example that was given, somebody breaks an arm, they go in, they get their surgery, whatever it is, in the healing process, they could be then placed in one of these alternative care sites. So they broke the state down into different respective regions and are looking at sites in each region. Gabe is working with Homeland Security, Emergency Management on that process. And so he's keeping me in the loop on that, and there's some discussions across the border too on how that's going to look within our community. But as of Sunday night, there were 255 intensive care unit beds available across Minnesota. That was a 30% increase in the last two weeks. There are now 100, 1,250 available ventilators statewide, that's a 56% increase in availability. There's a, the total number of hospital beds in Minnesota currently stands at 2,621 as of Sunday night. The state officials are anticipating they can increase the number of available beds to more than 5,000 through alternative care site facilities. And again, the effort's being undertaken by the State Emergency Operations Center or through them. They're going to be flying around the state this week, sounds like an even black hox to do these site evaluations and look at these potential sites. So I'm sure that they're in contact with Gabe on that as that takes place and what might happen with that. And of course, as you can imagine, and you were talking, Kevin Lobitigo, about, you know, this peak and all that. And there's, some of the things, factors that go into play here, like supplies. I mean, there has to be supplies to, you know, support these efforts. So there's a lot of, there's a lot going on trying to navigate that, you know, how do we get the right supplies here? Is it going to be timely in combination with all these sites that are, of course, resource-intensive? Takes a lot to get these stood up and then, again, supply them and resource them. So it'll be interesting to see how it all shakes out, it's an adventure for sure. I just want to reiterate what Kathy was saying, the partnerships and the relationships that we have, it's a team effort. And I can't say thank you enough to Gabe, the Emergency Manager, for supporting us and Chad Staneen too from the city of Moorhead. It's been invaluable, so thank you for that.
Good morning. We have, in public health, we have an obligation to help homeless folks who have been infected or have the symptoms of COVID-19. And so we have been working with our local shelter and some facilities in town to develop a plan for temporary isolated housing. And so this would be for folks who have a positive test, those who have had close contact with somebody who has, and those who have the symptoms. And so that work, the devil's in the details. I mean, we work with a number of agencies about if we do have a facility, laundry and food and cleaning and all of the details that are going to be really important to, to, I guess, have in order. Last week, we submitted a grant application to MDH to help us fund this. And we have not heard, it's expected to be a quick turnaround, so I think anytime now we'll know. If we don't get that funding, these would be additional county expenses that we would need to undertake and then hopefully be reimbursed as part of this emergency declaration. So that's, that's something that I guess we're continuing to work through, the details out. But we anticipate that our homeless population that's living in congregate care, there's 112 folks that they have each night at Churches United, and there is not a way to isolate folks in that facility. And so we think it's inevitable, we're trying to get ahead of this so we can have a way to isolate, provide some temporary housing. And we've been in contact with MDH and communicating with several other counties to look to see what they're doing and trying to build the best model that we can in Clay County to address this.
Any questions for them? Just a few comments that I'm thinking as we go along here. I look at the schoolyards, I don't know who's policing the schoolyards or stuff like that. I mean, is the school supposed to be doing that or is the police? Because I mean, all, right now, the kids are all at home and they're, when it's warming up now, they're all going to be out playing and they're gathering at the schoolyards. Is, are they closed down or do we have any perception of that or do we know who's controlling that?
You know, there's no, I don't think there's been any enforcement acting. Obviously, it would come down to parents making good decisions, you know, they put in this social distancing and stay at home. Again, the government's encouraging people to get out for activity. That would fall on parents and guardians to, to tell their, their children, you know, okay, you two can go play, don't be in a big group. okay, you two can go play, don't be in a big group. There isn't, I, I don't think playgrounds should be closed down and, and schools aren't necessarily closing them down, but it's just, it's up to parents and guardians to make the right choice.
Now, as far as the Commission, I don't know whether we've got to make some decisions here or not either, you know, we've got the thing of not having 10 or more people in a gathering, something like that, and I look at, there's 15 of us here today making decisions here, and you're not supposed to have gatherings of 10 or more. I mean, do we as a Commission have to do something that, we have to do, I mean, do it by off-site, like some of the places are doing? I don't, I don't know whether we have to go to that, that area yet or not.
Mr. Chair, thanks for bringing that up. I, I think that definitely is something this Board should think about as all other city and county governments are, are considering that. 10 or less is the recommendation in order to stay six feet apart. So that's certainly, I appreciate that you're social distancing now, six feet apart, so that's certainly a consideration of how many you want in the, in the boardroom.
Okay. I just, I guess it's sort of a personal decision whether you want, whether we as Commissioners want to come to the meeting or not, you know. And I know Jenny's knowing that from home, and it's working out, so I don't know if we're going to make any changes or not, if there's any recommendations to make changes, or whether we have to or not, so.
Mr. Chair, one of the, one of the ways maybe we could do this would be to, as we have on our agenda, we have time slots, you know, for, for each item, and, and maybe for those who have a time slot to be here for that time slot, and then, you know, those that, there's no need for some to come here at 8:30 if your time slot is 9:30. That, that could maybe help keep this down. But I do, I, you know, obviously what we're seeing in this room right now, everybody is six feet away, and I think we're meeting that, although we have more than 10, but the room's big enough, I think, but.
Okay. I just wonder if anybody's concerned about making changes to that, that will go on as we have been. Okay, anything else, Kathy?
Yes, just one more thing. We have, Commissioner Haney and myself were part of that Wednesday media briefing that is held over in Fargo. My Public Information Officers are in touch with the information officers across the river as well. We suspect it's going to continue every Wednesday, so I don't know if our county administrator had mentioned that, but we'll, we'll want someone there from this Board, as well as myself, to again, do a presentation. My Public Information Officers are writing scripts right now, so it, I think it will be the same time, they're verifying the time, I think it was 11:00 when we went last week, and Commissioner Haney did an excellent job. We had all the mayors from all the communities, as well as others there, so I think there was 10 of us. So we will, we will continue, as far as I know, to do that every Wednesday, so.
Okay. Mr. Chair, one, if I can, one last thing. In your presentation, let's see, about the beds in Minnesota, you know, I, I think one of the, yeah, one of the, one of the things that's for Clay County and, and Moorhead, the likely bed place for them isn't even going to be in Minnesota. It's going to be in North Dakota, it's going to be in Fargo. And I, you know, so I don't know if we have the ability to take a look at, I, I think, I, I saw a deal on television where they had the leaders of Sanford Essentia and Altru, and they talked about the total number of beds and what they anticipate, and, and I, you know, I think for Clay County, you know, we can, we can look at the Minnesota statistics for beds and everything, but I, I think it's important that we, you know, we see where the likelihood of our people going, and, and what those numbers are to support getting, you know, all of the things that would be needed for the facilities that our people are going to be using.
Yes, that's correct. And we do have a COVID Task Force, so it's all the health facilities, public health, there's some officials on there, schools, so they will regularly update us, our health facilities in North Dakota about that.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments? No, but that will go into committee reports. Let's start off with Jenny today. Still there, Jenny?
Yeah, thank you. I had some, all conference call meetings last week. I think Kevin will probably update the diversion land management meeting, but we had a, a good presentation that took the majority of the time, so I'm not sure we got everything we wanted to talk about there, but had that meeting last week, I did have some phone conversations with members of the watershed about ditches and making sure everything's open and they're working well with the highway department, and had a meeting with Lake and Prairie. There's a significant amount of, of change going on there just based on COVID, it's such a fluid situation there, and also had a meeting with Lakeland Mental Health CEO on possible changes coming there. We will have an executive board meeting tomorrow to update the rest of that, but that concludes my report.
Okay, Kevin? Yes, thank you. On the 24th, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and the majority of that discussion was regarding 2020 equipment purchases, and I, I think what, I think we've kind of asked Dave to go back a little bit on that, if I'm not mistaken, to review a little bit more detail, some of those things. Steve, did we, did we make any decision on any of them, do you recall?
Not at this time.
Yeah, yeah, that's, so then, then we got a flood update, and we talked about the upcoming bids for projects that are going to be happening in April, and we kind of postponed the five-year pub, plan for public meeting. And then, I think, well, that's, I think that's it on, on Highway Tracking. And then Prairie Lakes, we did a, we did our meeting by teleconference. And really what we talked about there is, you know, changes regarding things that are going on because of the COVID-19 issue. We did, we did receive the MCIT additional bill regarding the four waste energy facilities in Minnesota on that insurance issue, which amounts to an extra $78,000 premium for Prairie Lakes solid waste.
Is that a one-time deal?
Well, that's just for 2000, for 2020, and that's because they had a hard time finding any companies willing to cover us. And so, you know, we'll have to see, and it, and it's, it has more to do with the liability of the building itself, not, you know, not what goes on inside it. It's just that if they had a, a total, you know, burn down of the building or something, so. And then we had a, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, we did have a diversion land management meeting, which was the, was also done the same way, virtual meeting. And the primary focus of that meeting was the ag risk study update done by the NDSU Department of Agribusiness. And it's quite an interesting study, and it, it, you know, it went into depth about different areas of this staging area or impacted areas when the project is in, in, in use, and what the delayed planting might mean, and the value associated to that delayed planting, that, so it was a very good presentation. And ultimately, I think because we all, as elected people, we hear about that, and at some point in time, I think we're going to, we're going to try to see if we can have that, a presentation on that brought before each Board in addition to the Diversion Authority getting a full presentation on it. It's, I think it's, it's, it's something that everybody's been asking about, and finally we're starting to get some of those numbers in terms of what would happen to an individual farmland in the event of that project being implemented. Then, we also then had the Clay County MCC JPA meeting held on Thursday the 26th. And several things there, we did have two more interested parcels that are properties in Minnesota that are looking for an early buyout. And so we did, we did act on one of those to move forward with the negotiations on the appraisal that's been done. And then we had another parcel that's right where the Red River Control Structure would be, so that's a, that's a critical piece of land. And that end of, that individual had raised some interest in wanting to have an appraisal done on that property. Now with the recent COVID stuff, you know, they've said, well, it's, there's no rush to that. So that was really the focus of, of, of that meeting. And then we did have a Diversion Authority meeting, virtual meeting, that same day, and it was a very, very limited meeting. I think it's probably the, one of the shortest diversion meetings we've had in a long time, and basically just dealt with the necessities and approvals for the diversion administrator. So that concludes my report.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Wednesday, I attended the now weekly COVID-19 press conference over at Fargo City Hall, and heard updates from the medical professionals and from the public health units in both Cass and Clay County. And both mayors, or all three mayors were there, West Fargo, Fargo, and Moorhead. That's my report.
Brad?
Yeah, Jim, I was going to, are you still willing to go to those press conference meetings on Wednesdays, then?
If you'd like me to, yeah.
If he's willing to go, I'd make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Haney to that with per DM, those press conferences regarding the COVID.
Take it.
Hey, we've got a motion, any further discussion? Jim, going to the press conferences, will take a roll call vote?
Commissioner who?
Well, I can't vote on it.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Okay, and then I had, we had the PICC meeting last week, which we discussed the issues with Social Services, and then, and then the, the employee issues that Steve's already discussed. I had a Dancing Sky meeting yesterday by phone, we're trying to do that every couple weeks now to make sure that everything is being kept up in terms of services to senior citizens in our region, and we talked about the meals being provided still, like here in Moorhead, the Yum! Com Center is still providing meals to seniors, and they have them available for pickup and home delivery. And then we talked about grants and things that we apply for that we're going to have to take a look at and see if they've been extended. And let's see, Kevin already reported on the joint, Moorhead, Plaine, Joint Powers diversion issues and the diversion board, and also I had Prairie Lakes, which Kevin talked about, so that's it for me.
Okay, I had the PICC meeting we had right after the meeting last weekend. Law discussion, I mean, one discussion was on Rondo, which we already covered here at the meeting, and the other one was on people working from home and stuff like that, and how we're going to pay them and how much to pay, or how much family leave or whatever they can take and stuff like that. Good discussion on that. Highway tracking, that's already been covered pretty good by Commissioner Campbell, and those are two meetings I had. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, on 24th, I also attended the PICC that's been addressed, and also Highway Tracking. I would note that, that the Highway Tracking Committee did ask, even though we postponed the meeting, I, he made sure that, they asked to make sure that Dave continued with that and that he will be coming to this Board on the 14th with an update of that plan. The 26th, I ended, attended the MCC JPA meeting that's been addressed. On the 26th, we also had an administrative team evaluating the, the executive order 2020, and later that afternoon, met with the department heads to provide them updates and directives. You know, again, much of the time this past week was spent on, on the COVID multiple calls with the, with this Board, local and regional administrators, spoke with Brandon Lunick from Minnesota School District of Moorhead Superintendent, and, and again, Kathy and her staff have, have just been amazing during this process. In addition to the great work of Kathy, Emergency Managers, Law Enforcement, Social Services, Juvenile Detox have certainly been on the, the front lines. I would like, like to make this week an additional shout-out to, to Tim and Mark Sloan, Tim Bent, Mark Sloan, for the work that they've done in, in getting us prepared to work remotely from not having a remote policy to, to now having additional needs. They've just done, done a tremendous work of getting everybody set up to make that transition that much smoother for, for our employees. Again, just a couple other things to point out, since October of 17, the West Central Regional Juvenile Center has been utilizing, utilizing the old facility of Cass County for North Dakota youth for, for times when we have more bed space needs than what we have prior to the opening of a new space. Cass County has inquired with James and both myself about utilizing that space for their additional needs during this time, and so this past week, James, in preparation, they weren't asked, but in preparation, they did, they are going to be moving out of that space with the intention that, with the intention that hopefully our, our space will be ready to go at the juvenile centers shortly. This past week, we did see a dip in the usage of, of the space. I think I reported last week that almost all of their beds were, were full, in both the secure and the non-secure, and so we've, we've seen that, we've seen a dip there, and the hope is that we won't, it won't have too much of an adjustment without having those beds. We do want to thank Cass County for allowing us to use that. It was really integral in, in a number of months and years, allowing us to use that, and so we appreciate that. We touched on the Board of Adjustments, and then Planning Commission will be going virtual this April. Also, just wanted to, to provide the Board a continued update on the census. Last week, there, there was a point where Clay County was number one in the nation in our self-reporting. Right now, Minnesota is number two in the nation with self-reports at 42%. Clay County is at 42.2%, and so we continue to encourage our citizens to utilize, utilize this time, if they have additional time to utilize and get that census material in because it is important. And again, as Commissioner Gross has indicated, it's not a very timely, it doesn't take a lot of your time, but it is extremely important that it gets done. That concludes my report.
Okay. Anybody else got something to bring forward?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Jenny, go ahead.
I apologize if I got too update. I've been having meetings with the Cass Clay Food Partners Network in terms of making sure now that we have the community's food resources documented, updated, that we are just getting that in the hands of the public. So they're having a Facebook Live every night to try to reach out to folks to get that information.
Okay. And I noticed that too, also the Jail Ministry, which, where they call the Self-Sweet Freedom now, they postponed their meeting to, for their benefit to a later date. Brian, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I, I thought I was just giving update, there might be something on the horizon that, that may need action from the Board at some point. I think right now, just to make you aware of it, as you're aware, I think Commissioner Campbell had brought up before some of the issues within the jail. We had worked through, myself with Sheriff Emptying and Julie and Justin at the jail to, to try to limit the, the amount of inmates that were in there, so if they were either low-intensity individuals, we had a couple people that had very low bail, but low non-violent issues such as possession of drug paraphernalia or some of those types of things that weren't able to make bail. or some of those types of things that weren't able to make bail. And we allowed a few of those without hearing to be released. So we had about five individuals that I reviewed and allowed to be released in that way. And then on top of that, we looked at people that were in the jail that were, that had sentences that they were currently on and whether or not, and this was back on the 23rd when I was reviewing them. There was a few that had release dates of the 27th that I reviewed and allowed for those four days to be. So we had another additional five that were individuals that allowed by shortening that sentence by four days, which was, I would just say, not a huge issue in regard to if those people were serving a 30 to 90-day sentence. Ultimately, them not serving those four days, I think was more important to allow Julie within the jail to get those individuals out of there so that they could look to, she has the, what they call a wild rice wing, which is the low-intensity individuals. She could shut that part down, allow people to be put in other areas within the jail and allow them to then cross-train people. I will tell you one thing, I, in talking with Justin in the jail, there had been a rumor that he was trying to quash that somewhere, somewhere within the rumor mill of the jail or gets through the court or whatever, that somehow, you know, the coronavirus was in the jail. And he wanted to quash that rumor right away. Not that it couldn't happen, but they're taking very strong precautions to make sure that people that are coming in the jail, they're tested to make sure they don't have any temperature, they're isolated for two days to make sure they don't have any illness. If they are sick in any way, they remain isolated. So they're doing a lot of different things to make sure that people are kept safe. It's not that it couldn't happen, and if it does, they'll take precautions as, as needed. But they have the ability to isolate individuals and in fact, the whole population if needed. But we have reduced the jail down, you know, the total jail amount that could be held there, I think is in the realm of 225, or I don't, I don't know the exact number, but 200 plus. I think they're down to about 65 right now and that's allowing them to make sure they're managing them well. If they have people that are jail workers that are ill, obviously they want them to stay home. You know, just to make sure they're, they're doing their own self-care and not causing, you know, any of their potential problems or sickness in there. And so that's the things that they're working through. And again, that I've been meeting with Sheriff Empting and Julie at the jail about and making sure that we're doing the best we can to limit the population. Within that too, I would say typically on a, on, after a weekend, the amount of arrests that we typically see are anywhere between 15 to 20, up to 25 over a weekend. And typically arrests during a weekday, anywhere from, you know, five to 10. We're definitely seeing a lower amount of arrests currently. I think they're just making sure that, well, I think people sheltering in place, you're not seeing as much public out. The bars and restaurants aren't open, so you're not seeing DWIs and that type of thing. So we're only seeing about three to four arrests per day. And so that's what we're mainly focusing on for us within the county attorney's office, making sure that we're addressing those individuals that are locked up and have to be arraigned. Steve had already talked to you about the Minnesota Supreme Court had put out an order. We're not seeing any cases currently, there are no jury trials up through April 22nd. And so that's the, the biggest issue that's out there. There will be not, there will not be any jury trials up through that date. And that's to limit the population not having to come in, not having to have our citizens be here, be close to each other, you know, in a jury-type environment. And so they're trying to limit that. With that, that obviously causes issues that are potential backlog. I mean, that's the, the biggest issue is there are individuals out there that ultimately need to have a jury trial and will have a jury trial, but currently they're postponed. And so those individuals have been addressed, they're still in the jail. They're the most serious individuals and obviously public safety demands that they remain in there. So lastly, the issue that I wanted to bring to your attention, Brad Borgan, who's with Alternative Corrections, he's our primary provider for electronic alcohol monitoring. So individuals that potentially, if they've been arrested for DWI and then they, after arrest, but prior to having a trial, we want to make sure that those individuals are not out drinking and driving. So we monitor them through electronic alcohol monitoring, which is a daily monitoring that they have to blow into a device several times a day to show that they're, they're not drinking any alcohol or consuming alcohol. That provision comes through the court and that's done at a defendant's expense. He's either in jail or he's allowed to be out, he or she, allowed to be out with conditions that include not consuming alcohol and then being on an electronic alcohol monitoring per day. It costs about $14 a day for those individuals to be on that device. As you might recall, back many years ago, probably, probably five, eight years ago, we used to do that at county expense. And that was mainly to try to reduce the jail population was really the primary reason we were agreeing to pay for at county expense. We obviously have jail capacity and room now and the county does not pay for that. It's at the individual's expense. But I can tell you that in talking with Mr. Borgan, that we're starting to hear from individuals that are talking about the fact they don't have a job, they can't afford the EAM, the electronic alcohol monitoring. So then if they aren't able to afford it and they violate that, then they'd have to go back into the jail, which obviously you can see what the problem with that is, we've been trying to reduce population. So a lot of discussion was had in regard to whether or not we should make a motion or look to the idea that we would go back to being at a county expense for a period of time to make sure that we're assuring public safety or not putting those people back in the jail. So that's the issue that we're looking at right now. I talked with the city prosecutor as well, they have about six or seven people that are on it. We probably have about 10 that are currently on it. But what we're trying to do is look to see if we can get some of those individuals, get the matter resolved, allow them to plead. We can, even though the court is not allowing pleas in person, you can do some pleas through, through petition, through paperwork and file it. So hopefully we can look to limit how many of those are. And then if we can, if there's only a few left, then we'll address those once they come along and look to at least make a recommendation to the board, whether or not that would make sense to, to allow for that and, and look at doing it at county expense. Because I think the other issue is if they just go back into the jail, they're going to just come back in and then ask to be released from the jail. And I expect the courts would probably release them without being on any type of monitoring. And so, so that little conundrum is an issue that's out there. We're going to work through it here over the next week and then hopefully I'd have a recommendation for the board really by next week. So I thought I'd update you on that. I will just give a shout out, since I'm up here, to Steve. You know, since the courts are limited right now, we have several people working from home. So we've started doing that. It is working pretty well. The remote access that's out there, just from, from my standpoint, my employees are able to access remotely, work from home, they're getting a lot of work done, still processing a lot of things. We have, so IT really deserves a, a lot of credit. We did do a Skype meeting with all the management that worked really well. And so IT, I think, deserves a lot of credit as well, Steve getting some of those things organized. It's, it is working pretty well and keeping things moving. So that's just my update for you for the week.
Thank you. Any questions? Let us know. Okay. Thanks.